Well Jimmy, I have to.
I'm thinking the bidding time wouldn't be soon enough for us to know. You know, they were hoping to get the bids in.
Right.
But I'm sure that's not what they want.
Well, have they, did they put a deadline on it?
Hey, we had a whole conversation about this in the meeting.
Did you?
Okay. Because that was a kind of rigid English debate back there. I don't know if that ever been really.
Let's see.
But what was it, the bidding process was going to be, what, fifteen to thirty days or something? I don't know.
It's like, well, because I've heard it a couple times. Sure.
I'm thinking, uh, only in the paper.
Basically told it wasn't. It's business. But you're at the end of the word. I have this very important. I promise I tried to wish to play this.
I think that's kind of what's happened in the past because they have everything that needs to be in there.
It's been, it's been great.
So.
Wasn't a big deal. But they ended up.
I didn't get nothing. I bet Jimmy don't have anything.
Okay, fifty thirty. Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
City council meeting, city of Mayflower come to order, July the twenty second. Uh, first on order, uh, calling to order and, uh, if you will, please stand with me. For the pledge of allegiance. Okay. My ladies, ladies, flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, America, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Glad to have you, Michael.
Oh, thank you so much, but good to be back and thank you so much for, for filling in for him.
You're welcome. Mark Higman.
Here.
Zach Jeffrey.
Here.
Jack Paul.
Here.
Kyle Marks.
Here.
James Snyder.
Here.
Larry Hill.
Here.
All right, next, uh, approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion for, to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting June the twenty fourth?
I'll make a motion.
Twenty five.
Make a motion to approve the city council meetings of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second. Got a second? Barbara, will you call the roll?
Mark Higman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Marks.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, the financial statement, June twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion to approve the financials? June twenty fourth.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Barbara, would you mind calling the roll for the vote?
Mark Higman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Marks.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Now moving to general, we, the first, we have resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three, purchasing of cellular endpoints for meters. That's Raymond. Uh, is he here?
He's on the same question as we keep.
Oh, he's on that.
We had answered this one.
We discussed this at the workshop of a, uh, community resolution year.
I will, sure, but we move this. Resolution two thousand twenty five dash twenty three, a resolution authorizing purchase of record fit cellular endpoints for existing meters by Mayflower Water Works Department.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash.
Zach Jeffrey.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Larry, your second. Thank you. Barbara, will you call the roll on that vote, please?
Mark Higman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty seven, purchasing street department truck. That would be Jimmy, uh, Jimmy's truck.
Resolution two thousand twenty five dash twenty seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Mayflower to lease purchase, uh, one truck for the street department.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty seven.
Second.
Thank you. Jimmy, if you got any details on that this morning.
Jimmy, Jimmy, the boat hasn't been taken.
No, it's just.
The boat has not been touched. Then maybe a problem.
It's in the resolution. Dollar amount.
Barbara, will you call the roll?
Fourth, whereas.
Did you, did you have some questions?
Jimmy, if everything was still aligned for the same dollar amounts and all that are listed in the resolution.
Jimmy?
Yo.
Did you hear the question? Come up, please.
Here we go.
I told you to clap too soon.
Oh, I did. I tell them to gun. I'm normally good at that.
No, I just know when these things carry out, things change and the dollar amount's still good on that contract for forty eight thousand, three thirty eight.
It's there. Everything's there.
Yes, that's what we're buying.
That was what was previously discussed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty six months, please, with a payoff at the end.
Yeah.
I'm helping down.
Hold on, Jimmy. Any other discussion? No? All right. Barbara, if you will, call the roll for a vote.
Mark Higman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Marks.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Hey, the problem is, you've already got the truck.
I paid the first payment.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might be tough to take.
Don't, don't forget about those emergency lots and signage.
Yeah, next six weeks after.
Okay, just, you gotta get those. All right, thank you. Uh, the next was, uh, record management fire department, resolution, question mark? Chief? Or Chris?
We stench all the contract and dollar amount. Those are there. That's one we decided was the best fit, everything we need.
That was the one that we discussed.
Yes, sir. I was the one we discussed.
Now you were, there was one more that you were supposed to be looking at the following day.
Yeah, we were, uh, we didn't want to get, we excluded them. They were a little higher and, uh, this was an all around, the best package was just.
Well, that's what you presumed, that you thought would happen, that you wanted to go, that you had one more that you wanted.
We do our deal with this, getting me some good. We did thirty or forty different day, one of those, this one's set out for us.
I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, I didn't see in the contract what they are or are not allowed to do with the data, with our data. Do we know?
It's, it's public data. Everything, everything is public.
It's public? Can they, can they monetize?
We report, we, we, all of our reports go, it was an effort, now it's going to areas, reporting. That's the main, everybody's getting away with it, make it go in areas.
Okay.
All of it, they send all of our reports off, everyone.
Are they, is there any option for them to monetize our data? I saw that when we terminate, they will give us a copy of our data, so they, since it's public data, that's why they're keeping it and not deleting it?
We can, if something ever happens and we name the terms, go to different software. We can migrate our data out of this one system, carry it to different systems.
Do they offer any support for migration? Because migration is not.
They're actually gonna do all of our migration from our current.
Right, I mean, if we leave them.
Yeah. Sometimes that would come with a digital charter. That's not something you should discuss on the front and we, you can come and.
We should. When, when it comes to software and licenses, we absolutely should because we get to the end of a license term and they hold our data, they hold us hostage. We see this in the corporate world all the time.
So, but part of them, we're the ones that all their, ultimately entering the data in the system, so when we pull up a CSV and Excel files, we have the data control.
I mean, in the fu, I mean, in the future, when, if, should we leave them, sometimes companies make it particularly difficult to migrate data to a competitor. So.
That's why we keep local copies, not necessarily the format that they need. We have the data.
So where, everything we enter into this system, we keep separately as well, so we have it on hand?
I'm looking in the contract. It says right here that that is considered confidential, that anytime the customer can request the copy of their data, then the last line, if the customer decides not to continue their relationship with Alpine, the customer still owns the data and Alpine will provide a copy of it.
Yeah, I know, I bet, but the word copy is what, in the corporate world, that's, that's not sufficient. It's, it's my data, give it to me and delete it from your system when you're, I'm no longer a customer of yours. But if this is public data, then that's not, that's not an issue, so that's why I was asking, the word copy concerned me because.
Everything goes on in that stuff we put.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we.
And in this world of data, you have to really control your data or somebody else will. So, I, when, I, when I read through the contract, I just had those questions. Those are.
And it's also in the contract. They don't need our terms, so they're very, we can terminate.
Yeah, I saw the SLAs. Um, okay, no, those are, those are my.
Mark, you had a question?
No, I was just, we've done a couple of stuff in my career field and usually that's with the company that we're going to, they, they orchestrate all that to happen and pull it out.
And that's what ours is.
Well, right, but some, another company can't go into the backend of another company's product and take that data. They, they can't do that. So when you leave a company.
But they orchestrate together, you know, making.
Usually, not always. So that, that's why, I've run into issues where we've had a horrible, horrible mess in migrations that costs a lot of money because the company we were leaving decided to make it difficult because there was nothing written into the contract that says when we leave, this is what you will do. It's not specified, like this con, this contract is not specific when it comes to the data, so that's, that's just why I was asking those questions.
We don't have a, an official resolution to read and vote on for this purchase.
We don't, they, it's been emailed.
I'm sorry.
It's been emailed.
Chris emailed to us that the thing, he even listed this from twenty five dash twenty eight.
Yeah.
Have you read it?
I don't.
I can.
It was in Chris's email.
Yeah.
Now, now. The resolution came from Chris.
It's, it's been emailed out.
Now, all those questions to say, I don't have any issues with this, I just wanted those questions. I know you, I know you and Chris will do your due diligence in getting a good program, but those are just questions I have.
Hey, I got a question here too, that I, I don't know, just looking at the contract, I know we said that we were gonna be liable in it at seventy nine hundred dollars, but also see they have what would be like a CPI, four percent, or about three hundred bucks a year.
That's lower. We've seen the size, twelve or seven, that one of them was twelve. The other one was ten.
Which probably isn't too far off from reality.
Was that copied on that email?
I read it, it wasn't on me yet.
Yeah, I got it.
I got the hard copy before I let it down.
You bring up dates?
Chris, you put it right in front of me?
Yeah.
And now, if you've seen my desk.
All right, Dustin's looking at the resolution that you had sent by email.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
This is, this is standard resolution, adopted agreement.
Okay, do you want the?
Sure, yes, okay. Resolution two thousand twenty five dash twenty eight, a resolution authorizing the Mayflower Fire Department to enter agreement with the new records management system provider.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty eight.
Second.
When you get finished, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Mark Higman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Marks.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did not see that. It was not in the package.
There, there was a long chain of, of comments. That's how it was.
You can't want to waste the professor.
It's resolution.
Uh, if, if.
Will the contract follow?
This, I, this reference is the contract.
Okay, and so then the contract.
And if you're.
So it's.
Yeah, it, it, it just needs to be recorded with these contracts.
Gotcha.
All of that.
And once, once it's signed, we'll have a copy, that's the resolution.
And that human proposal was seven thousand.
Eight hundred ninety nine.
Seven thousand eight hundred and ninety nine dollars.
And it won't be due till, third of September, on the first of August goes out.
And we need all of this, Justin said, behind the resolution. For that, to re-report.
Yeah, I assume this will give you guys everything you need.
Okay, thank you.
Bless her. Cool.
Thank you, Chief. All right, the last one, bids for paving North Main. Jimmy?
Drive your new truck up.
All right. Okay.
Bids for paving North Main.
Yeah, they had some questions the last time I wasn't here, the last council meeting, and they had some questions for me, and I don't know if y'all tabled that or what, the engineer was here.
Basically told him to go forward with the bid process and.
Bring it back to us, yeah.
He acted like it would be turned by me into the blunt. I questioned the timeline myself, but he acted like it was flooding the bill and it would be done. But we haven't gotten any bids in this.
Ah. So. Had, uh, had the, uh, and we're still talking about half, half, yeah, engineering, right?
Yes.
Okay, did they get finished with their, all of their preliminary?
Yeah, um, supposed to. Now, they had some questions on the coves, the shape of the coves, that they was extending and stuff like that.
Yeah, you're talking about.
And I checked the calls. I mean, they're good.
Yes.
So.
But that had to be finalized before it was put into the specs or a bid package. But you're, you're not aware if they finished the bid, bid package, right?
The bid package was completed at the last minute. They just wanted approval from, from the council to go before we're putting it out for bids. Was, was not understanding.
I thought, yeah, I thought they were just on the cusp of sending it out, starting to get.
The next day, because again.
I knew he had it written.
Okay, I wasn't.
Until I last meet, because I was supposed to met him here tonight.
Okay. Jimmy, tomorrow, will you contact him?
Yes.
And find out where we want, where we are. Tell him to, we wanted an, an email in terms of the status of what's going on with the bid process. Had they completed it in terms of, uh, uh, completed a whole bid package? That they had everything together, uh, and who, who are they going through to advertise this?
Oh, I don't, that's all on them for that, right, as I said.
I think he did say too, he was gonna list it with someone at the, at the state that, that sends these things out to all these different contractors as well, like the municipal league or something has this distribution list.
State contracts.
Yeah, so they're, they were gonna distrib, they were gonna distribute it there, then I think he said the newspaper too.
Okay, and then this is part of it too. This is a bid I got on the trees that we can't cut. We went over and took care of about all of them we can.
Now, this is on the, on the east side, next to the railroad avenue.
And I've got one on the west side, one tree that's got to come down.
Is that those white trees that are there?
Yes, yes. So, I mean, the bid is sixty five dollars, sixty five hundred.
I was like, damn, that's a heck of a deal.
Turns tea.
I mean.
And that's fifteen trees.
Fifteen trees, and will they take them down and haul them off or what?
Yes.
Does that include the stumps also?
That's everything.
Wait a minute, I thought you said, when we talked about this before, they were going, that price was going to include them taking the tree down.
Fifteen hundred dollars, and they're gonna haul all this wood off. That'd be crazy for us to try to do.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. So they are going to haul off all the, the trees.
Sixty five hundred with everything. That they've got fifteen trees, and I mean, some of these trees are.
I understand, but, but they're cut, cutting them down and hauling off the debris.
Yes, or we can haul all of it off, cut it up and haul it off for five thousand.
So, so you got fifteen hundred, you wouldn't touch that with your manpower, would you?
No, no.
Any equipment and all that, yeah.
And then disposing and everything, all that, you know. We've already had a brush pile with Phil back in this building out there before we took out of it so far.
Okay, so, so what are, what are you asking with this?
I'm asking for permission to do it.
I think it's a reasonable bid, but do we want to seek other bids? Have we sought any other bids?
No. But I know that there ain't nobody else gonna touch it right there. I'm telling you, one of them trees over there would cost six thousand dollars, easy. Them boys are just cutting the seed and doing what they're doing.
This is the wadded, uh, boys, uh, that, that.
The young guys.
Normally, if we have a dangerous tree or something.
Yeah.
We can't cut. They are the ones that have, yeah, have proven that they've given us the best deal.
That true.
Right?
Right.
Uh, what does the council want to do in terms of, you want to go, Jimmy, do you get some other bids?
Good with it.
You're good?
I don't know much about the cost of cutting down trees like these guys do, so.
It's expensive.
Yeah, I know it's expensive, but I couldn't put a dollar amount on it. If they say this is a good deal, then we're gonna.
Move a while. Well, that's, it's, it's, break it down per tree, which is hard to do, because some trees are bigger than others.
Sure.
A little over four hundred dollars per tree.
They're booting the stock too?
Well, I mean, they cut it at the ground. They don't, they don't dig it out, because we got fiber in there too. We don't really.
They're about to pull out that rainbow.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't kill my internet.
So they're gonna get as close to the ground as they can get it, which is pretty much ground land.
Okay. So, what does the council want to do? You want, does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we get it up.
To approve this invoice for them to go forward and all the, the trees, excuse me, all the trees in regard to, uh, North Main for the widening of the street and resurfacing.
Yep.
Okay, Zach?
Second. Zach, I had second. There's fifteen trees. You want to replant them some?
Easy now. Just don't go there.
Dangerous trees. I, I had to end on the side of one of my trucks from one of those more trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Literally within eighteen inches of the.
At the side of the road.
Yeah, I shot eight more.
Right. Barbara, would you call the roll for the vote, please?
Mark Higman. Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Marks.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
And I'll get ahold of them tomorrow and we'll find out what's going.
Ask them to give us an update and an email, so we've got a record of it, please, uh, and they do a good job, but it's just, we need an update.
Okay.
As to where they are and, uh, if they've already received any.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any bids. Uh, did they, again, I, you, maybe you don't know, did, did they put a deadline as to their end date, that bids would be accepted?
They will have one on it.
Okay, we just don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, just get all the particulars in an email, if you don't mind.
It was not understanding it was supposed to be.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I was asking, let's, let's get something in writing, so that when you get it, you can bring it to Barbara and Barbara just send it out to everybody as, as far as FYI, okay?
And I wanted to let everybody know we got Gary Hammer took care of it.
The, the drainage?
Yeah.
Issue? So he's happy now?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I hope he is. I ain't talked to him. Believe me, if he's not happy, you're gonna know.
What, uh, what'd we do?
Huh?
How, how was it remedied?
Well, where it come out and blowed right into the, into his shop, I actually put a nanny on it and turned it and shot it out behind his shop, and that stayed on the city east.
Okay, awesome.
In addition to cleaning out the opposite side of the street.
Yeah.
Uh, where water was coming off of those properties and the, you know, with all the silt.
Yeah.
That had filled in the, the ditches, it's coming over the street and then going over.
We ditched probably five hundred feet of ditch over there.
So, yeah, he ought to be real happy then.
Well, the other, other, uh, resident should be happy too.
Yeah, absolutely.
It needed this.
Yeah, awesome. Well, thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate it.
It's gonna help the drainage.
Yeah.
In that whole area.
That's awesome. I'm glad he brought it to us and let us, gives us the opportunity to fix it.
Yeah.
You bet. Y'all too, man.
Sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, in the old business. Yeah, I had contacted, uh, my contact. Uh, things are not like it used to be. Uh, it's not easy to pull strings anymore, and so I wasn't, I wasn't successful.
They called three times.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what, what they said was, they are, uh, pretty hard fast when it comes to what they call public damage.
Right.
And, uh, they, 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 they go after that, that collection.
It's not about any of those related damages.
Well, I was hoping that I was gonna be able to, to, uh, either get it eliminated or reduce, but I wasn't successful in that.
Okay, so it's a high plan?
Council, do we need to vote on that?
I, I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah. Uh, Jimmy, there was no doubt. It was a, a city employee that, that did, that was involved in this, okay? Yeah, so we have to, we're gonna have to pay it.
Was there, was there any, was there any, hey, Jimmy? Jimmy, was there any, was there any ramifications from that?
No. Yeah, they did come in there and they flagged all of their stuff.
I, I know for, for, for our city employee.
I see it day on the video, so I'd say probably a little bit.
Okay.
I looked at, uh, what it is, when you come around that corner, he, he's new on the bushel, and I'd probably should have warned him. But when you come around that corner, that guide bar goes into the bushes, and with that sun the way it is, it's, it's kinda hard to see it. And he hung it with the front bucket and not running wide open to get it. He just hung it enough. And that pole snapped in three places.
With the, with the bucket or the bushel?
The bucket.
Okay.
And it, uh, the pole was just rotten. I went over there and kicked it, and I mean, it fell, started falling apart. But anyway, I think they give us a, a, a deal.
For thirty eight, is it?
Thirty eight, yes.
Yeah, okay.
We need a motion.
That's what I was gonna ask, because we need.
Motion to pay the energy invoice.
So we're. Motion, second?
Yep, second.
Second?
Yep.
All right. Barbara, will you call the roll on that, that vote?
Mark Higman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Kyle Marks.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. So, yes, Chris, go forward and pay your energy. All right, now we've got, uh, movie comments, uh, public comments, then we've got dedication of property to city by Family Market.
Yes, that was the point two one acres with the welcome sign, that was the Family Market was born, was dedicated to the city.
Right.
And I just thought that would be enough.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, that's why I put that there.
I saw today, when I passed by there, there's a survey stick, uh, 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 so they've already had that survey. And they're going to go ahead and file that in, uh, court, uh.
Yes, and, um, James, the chairman of the. Uh, yes, and, um, James, the chairman of the planning commission, had signed off on their plan because they, they had put the survey stakes. And then, um, Dustin is going to get with their engineers and, and draw up a deed.
Get the deed recorded, right, and, um, once that plan is recorded, that takes care of that dedication, but we'll, we need to put it in our, our. It's all seen.
Okay, now, uh, so they need to follow up with us to give, to, to give us.
We'll, we'll have a resolution on the head that'll apply the August meeting.
But you're gonna have them to give us a, uh, legal description.
Yes.
Of what they're, they're going to, okay, that's, I was gonna say, we've gotta have that in order to file it.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good, thank you. Uh, any other comments? All right, we move to announcements. Our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August the twenty sixth. Uh, six thirty P M. All of our meetings begin at six thirty P M. Next planning commission meeting is Tuesday, August the twelfth. And then our next council workshop meeting is August the fourteenth, six thirty P M. Do I hear a?
Barry, will you open up a public comment?
I thought I just did.
You missed it.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Sometimes we gloss over. I just wanna be sure we, we have a.
I didn't hear you once, so I moved on.
My name is John Ott. My problem right now is your garbage pickup. They come by once a week, they go through every bin in our trash can before they put it in their truck. I had it, we lost some power, we lost a bunch of meat, we bagged it up. I took it out to the curb. It was too heavy for me to pick up and put in the garbage can. They can buy, they took a garbage can to the truck. And go through the bags, and then they put it on a hook and they dump it into the bin. There's two men there. I was able to pick it up to get it on, uh, something to move it up to the front of the house, the garage. Why can't we have a, a trash service? You hire three people to move trash that you got there going through. No reason whatsoever. Where I came from, in the Fort Smith area, they got. One driver, one truck that comes by, grabs the trash can and throws it in. You're paying for three employees and the fuel. I don't know what it's costing you, but it's costing you too much money.
They, they were the lowest bid.
Well, they, they didn't want to pick up trash. There was a piece of wood in the trash can. They threw it on the ground.
I, have you, have you?
Stupid.
Have you contacted them at all?
We, we tried to, uh, matter of fact, the, after they left, I went out there. I turned the garbage can on side and then I dragged the meat into the garbage can for the next week pickup. And that truly stopped like, yeah, did. So, that is my problem. You may get the cheapest, but you're getting the worst end of the deal.
Right. From, from the standpoint, uh, in their contract, they were only supposed to pick up the garbage can.
That's not actually true.
Mm-hmm. I think they said, they said a couple of bags.
Bear can, and you could purchase an additional can if you wanted to, but in addition to that, they would pick up an additional two boxes or two bags. Outside of their receptacle.
Oh, outside of.
Yeah.
Now, there, there were some limitations on.
Large.
On what was, what was there like?
Large.
Of bags.
Large pieces of wood, they can't do because it's dangerous.
Right.
Like that, and I don't remember being lost.
Our construction equipment.
You can't, that's gotta go involved.
Yeah.
Can't send that with.
Right.
But if it was in a bag, they should have picked up that bag.
Yeah. Yeah.
You said it, it goes through your trash?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so what they, what they've done, um.
We can sit there. While we lay a board, and they're sitting there and watching, they go through the bag.
So.
Right, hold on, hold on, one at a time.
Here, can you repeat that, sir? They go through your, they explain the going through the bags?
That they open the bags, looks within the bags. They don't like something they see, they take it out and throw it down. Like I said, a piece of wood was from welding, they threw it on the ground. Just stupid stuff, you know, you were paying for trash pickup, that's trash. It should be taken away. Same as that, that thing of meat. It sat there in this hot sun for two weeks, smelling really good.
So I, I think what they're, I think what they're doing is, within their contract, they, they're not allowed to, um, take certain, certain items. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know what exactly it is. I know that they've taken stuff out of my trash can. I had some, like, T-posts and things like that. You know, in there that were all, you know, rusted and everything, and those, those got thrown back on the ground and.
Yeah.
I've had some other things like, you know, that, that get taken out of the trash and, and thrown on the ground.
So I realized like ink cans or gasoline.
Right, yeah, so, yeah.
But, uh, bad meats, raw food, you know.
Well, it made a bag, you're not gonna be able to tell if it's food or.
Let's.
They can open the bag, the bag wasn't sealed. You know, I didn't tie the top of the bag. I had to just get, maybe, for example, drag it.
Yeah, they should have taken that. There's no.
Yeah.
I, I get some of the other stuff, but a bag of tra- yeah, media, I would think they would definitely should have taken that.
Right.
It's definitely worth giving them a call.
Yeah, just have them like send over, send over kind of a refresh on what they're, what they're taking, what they're not taking, kind of how they.
Right.
How they do stuff, so.
Barbara, we just called in, uh, what's her name in the morning?
That is senior contract or junior contract?
Three years. It's a three-year contract.
Second question. You, um, where I came from before, I was on a police force. So we had, uh, an area where the state would give us a discount on gasoline and fuel for our vehicles. Trucks, fire, fire department and all that. You get a cheaper rate and the. Operator of the vehicle would fill up the cars and sign for it on, on a law and send a few band, a vendor out here. Uh, extra money, because he's, he's trying to make a profit. He's trying to save money, but, but you can't even like your sign up. Wouldn't something like that be better for the town? Where you have a central location for fuel, I believe the state will give you a break on taxes and things, because you're paying.
If they will, that's news to me.
Look to do that.
We had a reserve tank, I think a thousand gallon tank back behind the station that Chief filled up with used last summer, I believe. Is that correct?
What about your?
The used car?
Yeah, did we get a break on any of that fuel or was it retail cost?
Re- retail cost, because we're.
That is retail cost, however, the fuel that we use for our vehicles, um, that we actually fill up in a station. We go through the state, uh, sponsor, we have a state contract through WEX, and that means that, uh, the tax, the gas that we do buy. On those cars, on that program, the federal taxes are waived, so we do.
Okay, the state money, that is, okay. Can you just, I've tried to send some, uh, messages in, because I tried to watch this on, online.
Mm-hmm.
You people, some of you speak very softly, don't speak into the microphone, or you talk so slow, so low, it's hard to understand you. Then you got the echo in here, and that's, I guess, your, your position.
Yeah, one of them.
But, uh, anyway, I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And we'll check on.
The garbage.
Situation.
Please.
We'll contact, uh, uh, Zella's in, in the morning and, uh, get that resolved.
You know, I would think too, like, if, if they said, like, someone said that Zella said the bag was too heavy, I would think if he is able with a walker. To turn the, the can on its side and roll it in, surely those two guys could have done the same thing and then used the lift to, to, to lift it up. So you didn't have rotten garbage.
More than that, because I, I cleaned out a bunch of stuff not long ago and put a bunch of food and stuff in there. It's heavy and they, they, it's, I don't, I don't know what.
Yeah.
I don't know why. Maybe it was somebody in a bad mood that day.
I thought somebody, I thought someone out there said that Zella said it was too heavy or something.
Bleed down, down the driveway a little bit. I had washed that off.
Yeah.
It's been two weeks.
When it's sitting for, sitting for two weeks, they pick up every week.
They didn't take it. He had it even out there.
Oh, I see.
He wasn't gonna take it back in his house.
Yes.
It really reeked in the house.
So.
I, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Chris, you know any that I'm not?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We got about five that made that motion. I think we got second over here. All right.
Play the back, play your race.
Uh.
Uh.
Your turn, thank you.